All right. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting. That's our city council work session. Today is Monday, September 14th. I hope everyone had a good weekend. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, we are continuing to hold our meetings via the Zoom platform. This meeting is streaming live via the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having technical or connection difficulties, please contact our public information specialist, John Vernon, at 336-513-5440 for support. For staff comments or to address the council or staff during this meeting, you can indicate that you wish to do so using the raise hand feature in Zoom or pressing nine if you're dialing in by phone and IT Director Scott Bibler will notify me if you wish to do so. This is the work session, so we generally don't have public comment for it. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. So, members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Butler?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Owen?
Here.
Staff presenting, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins?
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman?
Yeah.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith?
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman?
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Keller?
Finance Director Peggy Reese?
Here.
Economic Development Director Peter Bishop?
Aye, aye, sir.
Police Chief Jeff Smythe? City Engineer Todd Lambert?
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun?
Here.
Very good. I appreciate everyone participating in that. First item on our agenda, item A, Old City of Burlington landfill at Anthony Road remediation plan update. And this time, I'd like to recognize our City Engineer Todd Lambert. Welcome, Todd.
Thank you, Mayor Council. We wanted to come back to you and give you a brief update of where we were at in the process. As you recall, the council approved the city to enter a program with DEQ for remediation assessment of the old landfill off of Anthony Road. This is a pre-regulatory landfill, so it was not regulated at the time that it was accepting debris. And as such, the state has a program that is funded by tipping fees all over the state at existing landfills that fund this program where the state pays for investigation and ultimately the remediation plan for the landfill. So, our consultants who are joining us tonight, Ed Enriquez and Jason Volker of SNME, we're going to give you a brief explanation of the Phase One findings. They've been a little delayed coming back to you, but with all the COVID issues going on, we wanted to be sure we had stuff in correct order. We also have a request for a budget amendment. There were some additional items in Phase One that were required based on site findings. Those were approved by the state and those are 100% eligible for reimbursement. So, the budget amendment is a net zero that basically covers those extra costs based on field conditions.
Todd, I do want to mention, there's a fairly hefty amount of those findings, and I believe those will be available for folks if they want to review them on the Agenda Packet on the city website under Council Agendas.
Yes, so our consultants will not go over in word-for-word detail all 204 pages of the Phase One report, but it is available for your reading. We did want to just highlight some overview of what was found and give you a briefly explanation, so to speak, of a lot of the technical stuff that's in that report.
Very good.
So, I will turn it over to Ed Enriquez and Jason Volker, and then I'll close once they get finished with the presentation. And of course, we'll feel free to ask any questions at any time, and we'll address those as we can.
Welcome, everyone. And I'm sharing my screen. Just want to confirm everyone can see it?
Yes, we can.
I'll give you a very brief update on the status of our investigations at the pre-regulatory landfill on Anthony Road. Just wanted to start off with the pre-regulatory landfill road is a very prescriptive process. It's often conducted in phases, and we've completed what we refer to as Phase One. That very first phase of work included doing some descriptions of the site soils, understanding what the local geology looks like, as well as the hydrogeologic setting. We also looked at local water sources. That can be things like well springs, surface water intakes, looked at sensitive environmental receptors. Basically, also did delineation of the horizontal limits of the waste at the facility using geophysical methods. And we also did surface water and stream sediment sampling and analyses and prepared a report for NCDQ. That first phase of work cost on the order of about $61,000, and that was reimbursable. We went through the process where we submitted a preapproval-type package to the state that outlines our scope of services and what the expected fees are, and we get preapproval prior to starting each phase of work. Our findings for that very first phase of investigation was the estimated limits of waste encompasses about 33.3 acres. Our local water source survey found that there were three water supply wells that were observed within 1,000 feet of the waste, and two of those three wells are located up gradient of the landfill, which would be in a position where you wouldn't expect groundwater to migrate towards coming from the landfill. And there was also one well observed on the opposite side of Big Alman's Creek. The area along Anthony Road is served by municipal water. Our groundwater testing, or excuse me, our surface water testing detected 1,4 dioxide in two of eight samples that we collected at concentrations that are greater than the state standards. And I want to point out that with regards to the 1,4 dioxide, that is absolutely not a surprise. We see that constituent at virtually every landfill we work at. It is what is known as a volatile organic compound. It's used in the manufacturing of solvents for other chemicals, and it's also a trace contaminant in common household products like cosmetics, detergents, and shampoos. It just tends to be fairly highly mobile and groundwater, so it's one of the reasons why we tend to see it at landfills. So, no big surprises there. And we also observed some potential wetlands on site, and I'll show you that in the next slide. If you can see my cursor, this dash black and white line is the approximated limits of waste. And these blue hatched areas are the potential wetland areas. And these two areas labeled as SW4 and SW6 are the two locations where 1,4 dioxide was detected in surface water samples. Phase Two. Phase Two will involve delineation of the waste using soil borings, which means we'll go in and actually physically test by boring into the ground to verify where the edge of the waste exists. And we have estimated that that can be done with something on the order of 35 soil borings. We will also want a 100-foot grid, go in and do some above-grade, above-ground vapor survey, looking to see if we get volatile organic vapors at the ground surface or methane gas, which would not be uncommon from decaying waste in a landfill. We would also install 19 permanent groundwater monitoring wells around the perimeter of the landfill. Those wells would get sampled, so we can begin to have an understanding of what impacts, if any, would be to groundwater. We would do some additional surface water sampling for the 1,4 dioxide, which was previously detected. And we would make efforts to sample those water supply wells observed within 1,000-foot radius. Right now, and we do not have this budget preapproved or scope of work preapproved by NCDQ, but we estimate that that work would be on the order of $136,000. And again, we would not move forward with that work without there being approval from NCDQ. This diagram here I'm showing you, and I apologize, the site's so big, it's kind of hard for you to see at this scale, but what you'll see there is the grid that we would use for the vapor sampling. It shows the coloration you see, the yellows, greens, and reds. And I apologize, I'm colorblind, but I think those are the colors that are there. Those show you the signals that we receive from the geophysical method, which it contours using a color-metric type system. It also shows, and you can't see it at this scale, and don't worry about it, but it shows where those groundwater monitoring wells, as currently proposed or conceptual, would be located. And sort of last but not least, you know, what we're forecasting beyond Phase Two would be some landfill gas monitoring, which we would actually put wells in place, but wells for the purpose of measuring landfill gas vapors moving in the soil. We would do further characterization of the waste itself. We would also look at the soil cover, because the integrity of the soil cover, the thickness of the soil cover impacts how contaminants can move through that waste and impact the underground, underlying groundwater. There would be some additional periodic groundwater monitoring, as well as landfill gas monitoring. That's what that LFG monitoring is. And there's also a phase where we would look at wetlands delineation on sites. We can also incorporate, when appropriate, and when there may be cost savings to the city, other investigations that may be deemed appropriate, based on what some of your theoretical conceptual land uses for this site may be. I don't envision that necessarily in Phase Two, but I really see that potentially more in Phase Three of the project. But we'd want to look to see when those make the most sense. Now, I do want to point out, you know, those things, say, for example, if we wanted to do some soil borings to understand, you know, how that material might be able to bear, say, a roadway or a parking lot, those type of costs would not be reimbursable by the state. But the cost savings would come in by, if we're already on site with the equipment, there would be savings to the city to conduct those at the same time. And this is really a conceptual schedule. I wouldn't get hung up on it at this point, because we really would need to submit to the NCDQ our proposed scope of work and get that approved. And that timeline for doing that is, in most honesty, it's sometimes hard to predict. We could get it in two weeks, or it could be two months. So, that's why I'm explaining that, you know, conceptual schedule, yeah, is not really something I would put a lot of weight on at this point in time. And I will open it for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council?
I have, I have a question, just for my own information. A lot of these maps show conductivity data. Can you explain in layman's terms what that means exactly?
Sure. We use what's called frequency domain electromagnetics, and basically, it sends a signal into the ground. And the response time of that input of the signal into the ground can then be picked up by receivers. And it's a tool to use what the conductivity that material may be. And say, for example, you know, if there's buried metal in the ground, it's going to be far more conductive than, say, the natural soil, or, you know, materials that have higher moisture content will be more conductive than a dry soil, if that helps.
Other questions from council? Jason, anything you want to add?
I think Ed summed it up quite nicely, so.
All right.
So, with no other questions, I'd just like to remind council that the items we're asking for tonight is, one, just a consensus from council to proceed to Phase Two. That would be getting an itemized proposal from SNME and submitting that to the state for reimbursable. Once the state had approved all those items as reimbursable, we would come back to council to add that back to SNME contract, and also to ask council to consider putting the Budget Amendment 2020, or 2020-5 on tomorrow night's agenda for consideration of additional items in Phase One that were reimbursable.
Very good. Are there any objections from council to including those items? All right. Very good. So, we'll get that included on tomorrow night's agenda. Todd, anything else you need?
No, that was it. Just thank, thank council for this process. I think it's a great tool to use some funds that aren't ours to get some work done. Thank you very much.
And it's a good opportunity to figure out what we can do with this site in the long term. I think that's important. Plus, if it poses any risk to the watershed nearby. So, we appreciate your work, Todd. Jason, Ed, thank you for being with us tonight for this meeting.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity.
All right. Next item on our agenda, item B, Economic Development Strategic Planning. At this time, we'll recognize our Economic Development Director, Peter Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to you and council. It's great to be with you this evening. I even had the opportunity to wear a tie, so very excited for that. But great to see everybody tonight. I'm going to start a presentation to share with y'all on economic development strategic planning. So, hopefully, that will be popping up on your screen here shortly. All right.
All right. We've got the screen up.
So, I'm going to go ahead and get started. So, why are we looking at doing some economic development strategic planning right now? Well, the Economic Development Department was started by council in late 2017, so we're nearing three years of operation. And when I was brought in to be your first Economic Development Director, we had a pretty solid list of activities and priorities that were established in the comprehensive plan, and then also by council and the city manager to get the ball rolling on economic development. Of course, we were also in a very robust economic situation and upswing at that time, so we had a lot of very strong project activity. And doing a comprehensive economic development strategic plan just fell down the list a little bit. So, now here we are, and we have some good time to work on this economic development strategic plan, which will help council establish some clear priorities for economic development, investment, and policies. We'll be able to hear from businesses, the public, and our staff about economic development and what we can do to improve the conditions of our city, residents, and businesses. It provides a great undergirding for moving some policies forward, for understanding what is out there in the marketplace and where we need to move toward as a city in our recruitment and business growth efforts. And then finally, COVID, while not the best context for personal one-on-one close-up engagement, that may be a challenge for us. It is a great time to do some assessment and some planning while we have an opportunity, while things are a little bit unsettled. We're working in really establishing what is the new normal, and how could that possibly have some implications for economic development planning, business growth, small business establishment, et cetera. So, you've heard the why. Now, exactly what is a strategic planning process, and where are we within that process? Well, there are several steps through a traditional economic development strategic plan, and we are certainly in the organizing, pre-planning, and visioning stages of that plan. The next step that we would enter into is focusing on collecting some data and looking at data trends and analyzing those trends. So, we would like to look at the city 20 years ago, 10 years ago today, and then what's projected to be into the future. What type of jobs are here? Who lives here? Who works here? How have those things changed over the years, and what trends can we see from that information? We would be doing some assessments of plans that have already been conducted by professionals for the city. So, looking at those plans and where we are with them and what priorities are within those plans, assessing our business ecosystem, and how good is Burlington a good place to do business? Looking at our product, the land available and the buildings available to business, both existing and new business to the community, and what work needs to be done in those areas. And then looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats through that assessment process. Obviously, and probably quite clearly, the biggest lift of any strategic planning process is the engagement piece of it, and how we would conduct that. I'll get into some more detail here in a few slides on that. But that will involve, obviously, the public generally, our council members and staff leadership, and the business community, of course, being economic development. This plan will seek to establish some realistic goals for the city and action steps to get there. And certainly, we will be prioritizing those steps based on the tools that we have available and where we can get to. And then there will be a lot of publicizing of the plan and communication activities for the economic development strategic plan. So, our staff, we do now have a rather robust staff in economic development of three individuals, myself, a project manager, Blake Moyer, and our downtown manager, Sarah Beth Hardy, who recently transitioned from the downtown Burlington Corporation. So, because we have a robust staff, this will actually be a staff-led strategic plan. However, staff does need some assistance in certain aspects of professionals to help us with this process. So, we are proposing having a limited engagement with a private consultant to assist, and specifically, we're looking at that assistance to help us with the data management and assessment part of the project, and then also assist with the engagement part of the process. Obviously, that will be a challenge in a pretty big city with a large and growing population and limitations to public gatherings via COVID and the restrictions around COVID. So, we're probably going to do a lot of virtual events, and then we'll try and do in-person events as we're allowed per regulations, and certainly a lot of one-on-one events. But we have sought out the assistance of a consultant. We are reviewing three different consultant packages at this time, with the hope to make a decision very shortly on who will be assisting us. And we worked with our state, North Carolina Economic Developers Association, to identify the best possible consultants to work with. One final note on working with a consultant. Usually, a consultant means there's going to be a dollar figure attached to the effort. We have identified as a staff internal pre-budgeted dollars within the economic development budget and additional dollars to assist in the community development block grant economic development-focused budget. So, we feel very confident that we will not be asking council for a budget amendment to support this consultant contract.
Peter, you mentioned there were, we received three?
Yes.
I think previously you'd mentioned Withers had indicated they were not going to send a proposal. Did that change?
Correct. Thank you for that correction, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Withers and Ravadel actually emailed us late on Friday stating that they would likely not be submitting a proposal for this. So, we will be deciding between two, between Creative EDC and the Greenfield Company. Thank you for that clarification. So, regarding a timeline for the strategic plan, we have a proposed timeline that you see in front of you, and certainly, we're in the first few steps of that timeline. We suspect that after the consultant is selected, that we'll get right into work on data assessment and review, and then some engagement before the close of this year. We will then wrap up some of the engagement activities, beg your pardon, in the beginning of 2021, and then roll into some ideation, goal-setting, prioritization of some of those tactics and strategies. We'll have multiple feedback sessions with our steering committee and focus groups and council members, and then we'll be working on writing the plan in the spring with a rollout to the public and hopefully approval via council in May of 2021. So, now, sort of the meat of a proposal and what we would be doing, what each of these steps really sort of mean. So, obviously, in data collection, we're looking at those different time series pieces of information and comparing them to our own communities in North Carolina, but also some other comparable communities throughout the country. We will be doing the same with some of our properties and talent and workforce information. And then we're going to present all of this information as sort of a baseline of who is Burlington and where can Burlington possibly go when we work on those engagements of events with our stakeholders and our focus groups. Engagement being the big part of this effort, you know, you see the screen here, what we're likely going to be using some Zoom tools to work with our committees and focus groups through engagement. It's certainly going to be tricky. This is not like other engagement opportunities that we had. For example, when we did the Western Electric Project in East Burlington, we did tours of a vacant facility. We had multiple very close focus groups and outdoor meetings where we were all right there under a big tent. So, this one will look, unfortunately, a little bit different. We're certainly going to do our best with engagement, because we really think that's the straw that's going to stir the drink of this strategic planning process. So, this is just a very quick idea of how we're going to get the broadest feedback possible. Of course, there's a limited number at the top of this pyramid of individuals who are council members and our senior staff. And then we have our steering committee, which is a slightly larger group of people, very much represented by private industry and the public. Our focus groups will be an even broader swath involving neighborhoods, small business groups, tourism and culture, and some other more varied diverse groups. And then at the very bottom is your base comments that you get from general, from your general engagement sessions, and also results from a static online survey that we will be providing to residents. So, in each of these pieces, we're going to be talking closely with certain groups within the city, council, our senior staff, and our general staff members who are interacting with the public every day. We're going to work very closely with these groups and have them very much engaged in the process. We know, we see a lot of things internally, and as I have said to several colleagues, there really is no department in our city that does not have a direct impact or touch to economic development. From your, you know, sanitation and city services, public work staff, who are keeping the infrastructure working and looking good, all the way up to your city council, who are at the negotiating table, setting policy, and working closely with business. Everybody really has an impact on economic development, and we look forward to engaging with our staff to find out what their ideas and adjustments may be. I have referenced the establishment of a steering committee. And in addition to some of the traditional power brokers and stakeholders that you would see on a steering committee, we're also looking for city champions to be a part of this group. So, we are in the active recruiting stages for steering committees and focus groups, and that balance is important, a balance that represents the entire city, that represents different interests within the city, that have impacts with economic development, and certainly, an equitable and an inclusive group of people. That's going to give very broad perspectives on what economic development initiatives would be important for certain populations or groups throughout the city. And then also, as referenced, there will be even smaller focus groups, and our goal will be to get a member of each focus group to be part of a steering committee, so that there is very much a top-down, but also a bottom-up communication amongst our groups and stakeholders involved in the strategic planning process. And as you see, staff has identified five specific areas that we would like to group individuals on these focus groups. And even within those groups, we are seeking to have a very diverse and broad representation of the entire city. For example, you would want your industrial development to have some of your larger companies, but also some of the real estate brokers who work directly in representing commercial property and are working to bring new industries into town. For example, your tourism and cultural amenities would talk about some of the special things that are a draw to Burlington and really help tie business development, quality of life, and residential experience in the city. And then certainly, your neighborhoods, and talking about the livability and some of the ways that we can connect jobs, economic activity, and industry together through our neighborhoods and how they are working. And these are very much those boots-on-the-ground experiential professionals that we're going to want and desire that feedback for. And then to wrap up some of the work that these groups do, we're going to be making a lot of public presentations, whether via Zoom or in person. Some of that's going to be played by ear. We'll be building out a schedule as we work with our consultant on the best dates and times for public Zoom meetings or public meetings that will be open to the public with restrictions. So, we're very excited about communicating all the things that we're going to be doing as a group. One tool that we're going to use to communicate is setting up a static website. That'll be sort of a mini-site of economic development that will show progress, that will share that schedule, and where we are in the strategic planning schedule. We'll be able to share initial data and any presentations that are made by staff or by any of the committees for the entire group. And then any communications or updates that we have for council throughout the strategic planning process will be posted to that website. As many of you know, the city operates multiple, I'm sorry, social media, social media accounts and presences across many different platforms. We certainly plan to partner with our community engagement department, as we have previously during COVID, and then use some of our own accounts to really get the word out and make sure that everybody knows what we're doing and how we're doing it, and can get involved if they'd like to. And then, obviously, we're going to be mining and working And then obviously, we're going to be mining and working closely with many of the partner and stakeholder organizations like the Alamance Chamber, like our airport authority and others, the Burlington Downtown Corporation. That will be members for some of these communities, but also touchstones for additional feedback and making sure that we have every voice heard. So finally, when you think about the results of the strategic plan, what are you really measuring? What are you really trying to get to? And earlier I talked about broad goals and objectives of the city. Well, what are those? You know, those are creating more jobs. Those are creating economic upward mobility for citizens. So but that makes it a little bit tricky. So how do you measure one department on the achievement of those goals? Well, that can be somewhat challenging. So what we're talking about here is setting broad goals that are achievable by multiple departments and certainly led by an economic development effort. But I think what we need to be very careful with is understanding what are, what measures we'll be tracking along the way and then how we're going to communicate some of those successes and what metrics that we're going to track. So a measure would be how we're doing on unemployment or on poverty rates. And that's certainly a team effort to reach that goal, that measure. And that's something that we will track, something that we are more responsible for and that we can be judged closely on is some of the metrics that we put in place. Like how many businesses are we visiting for a year, per year? How many small business education events have we held? How many new business starts have been created in the year? How many new jobs have been supported in the year? So I think it's a combination of setting broad goals for the community, tracking where we are measuring on some of those key community indicators, and then looking at the different metrics that are produced through the organization's activity and how we are communicating with our businesses and growing the economy. So with that, that closes my presentation regarding strategic planning. We have communicated some recently with council, but certainly I welcome any questions that you might have at this time. Anything I could review over this presentation?
Thank you, Peter. Any questions from council?
I have a question, Mayor. This is Bob Ward. Peter, I mean, this study, I know it's more of a process and, you know, it sounded like you may wind up with some soft data to end. I'm really interested in redevelopment. Will a data collection involve identifying redevelopment properties? Or is that for another day?
No, certainly the opportunities for property redevelopment and vacancy rates and what type of occupancy are in certain properties, that we assume or we expect to be part of the properties and land assessment that will be done by a consultant. So we want to see what's the utilization. Are there underutilized properties? I think we know the answer to that. Where are they clustered? And what tools and resources can we put around or better communicate or advertise that can try and get private investment to redevelop those properties and turn them into new uses? We have been pretty successful with the state's building reuse grants. There may be some other opportunities for us to create or provide additional funding to folks to redevelop those properties. But yes, we do expect to have a full industrial and commercial real estate analysis to be a part of this so that where we need to go, so that we will have indication on where we need to go with property development tools.
Okay, so bottom line, there will be a segment of this devoted to identifying redevelopment potential, correct?
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Peter, I had a conversation today with somebody from the Retail and Shopping Center Association. And one of the things they were commenting about was that in the post-pandemic world, cities really need to proactively look at reuse in shopping center and big box type properties. Something where we hear a lot about Main Street and downtown businesses and how many may make it out of the pandemic, but just the trends that are changing the way commerce is happening are likely to further gut big box type properties going forward and make those a liability for cities. So is that something that you all will kind of evaluate through this process is what those properties could be reused for?
I believe so. I think it's closely related to Mr. Ward's question in how we would look at highest and best use and opportunity, especially in larger spaces like Alamance Crossing or even the former BMOC Mall where there's some vacancy there. What possible other land uses could be available to jumpstart activity on those sites? Could there be a good mix of multifamily in some of those properties to get more foot traffic or create more community feel around the existing retail? I think those will be interesting questions to ask of the consultant and to look at some comparables or look at some tools, quite frankly, that we could look at reuse. I think we've looked in the Maple Avenue Corridor project, for example. We've identified some light industrial uses that are in demand that could be transitioned on some of those properties. And I could see a similar type of highest and best use analysis being conducted on other retail areas where we could expect some future vacancy.
Yeah, I think as you mentioned, doing this, the strategic planning at this specific time is unique and that it provides opportunity, but it's also uniquely challenging in that we're going through a pandemic. And so the economy is evolving as you go. So I'm hopeful that the process will continue to kind of keep itself open as new challenges arise in this pandemic. Other questions from council? All right, Peter, we appreciate that update.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on our agenda, item C, pandemic impacts and financial update on fiscal year 2020 to 2021. At this time, we'll recognize Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese. Welcome, Peggy.
Council, an opportunity to appear before you tonight. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can you see that now?
All right, we've got that screen share up.
You're good?
We're good.
Okay, so this is an update on our, the impact of COVID. And to start off with, I'm trying to get my screen to move. Hold on one second. Okay, we're going to do it like this. So can you see my screen now still?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Sorry. I'm going to look at the general fund first. And the revenues that we're looking at are for just the first two months of the year, for July and August, and for our property taxes, which represent 46.1% of the general fund budget revenues for the entire year. Forty-six percent of our budget is dependent on property tax revenues. For 1920, we got about 14,8 million. For fiscal year 2021, we received 15.8 million, which is an increase of about 6.5%. One of the reasons, you know, that we get a huge chunk in August is that any citizen who has their mortgage escrowed and the property taxes escrowed, the banks are, it's their fiduciary duty to get that money submitted, the taxes submitted by the deadline of August 31 to get, take advantage of the half percent discount. For our sales tax, which represents 20.7% of the entire general fund budget revenues, in July of 1920, we received 1.2 million. In July of 2021, which this July, we received 1.4. And that's a 14.3% increase, which is totally unexpected. And we reached out to Sharon Edmiston, who is head of the LGC. And she says there is, she thinks it's just an anomaly. We can't ever guarantee when the not-for-profits are going to submit their returns to get reimbursed on the sales tax and when the refunds are going out, so that we could have had a lot of refunds going out July of last year versus July of this year. She also thinks that the kinks of the unemployment system between the federal and state finally got worked out in June and therefore there was more spending. But we, she certainly does not expect this to continue for the rest of the year. All of the other revenues combined, except for installment financing proceeds, make up 33.2% of the budget. And we received 2.9 million or almost 3 million last year. And then this year, we've received 3.4 million, so about a 15.78% increase. For our general fund expenses, just looking at our total general fund expenses for fiscal year 1920, we spent 11.3 million in the first two months. This year, for fiscal year 2021, we've only spent about 9.7 million. That's a decrease of about 14%. A lot of that is because about a $700,000 debt payment has been moved from August to September in this fiscal year. So last year, that debt payment was made in August of 19, and this year it was made in September of 20. There's been a large, smaller percentage spending in police and also recreation. And that makes sense for recreation is another huge chunk of this decrease because a lot of our facilities have not been opened in July and August. And so therefore, we don't have the expenses associated with them.
Peggy, if I could, on the property tax for the first two months. And you might not have these numbers in front of you. How does that reflect in terms of what percentage are we aiming for this year in terms of total collection? I know we all like to have 100%. That's not going to occur. But last year, we were, you know, we were down, I believe we were in a 97% plus. But, you know, if we are, what efforts are we making to try? And it's a difficult year to do it, but to increase that property tax collection amounting, take that rate up higher.
We are projected, I believe it's 97.34. We reduced our collection rate percentage in our budget this year due to the impact of COVID. We weren't sure where that was going to follow along because one of the things that the General Assembly at the state legislature did is to reduce or postpone for five months when people had to file and list their vehicles and get their tags renewed, and therefore that delayed getting their property taxes paid on those vehicles. Another factor that, in talking with lots of other locations, one of the practices that some other locations are doing is they're taking their, when they're getting payments on old years, they're applying them to the current year instead of applying them to the old years you're supposed to do. And that's what the city of Burlington is doing. If we get a payment that's for an old year, we're applying that payment to the old year. We're not including that in our current year amount.
Good.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the Water Resources Fund. And again, this is looking at July and August for the first two months. For water sales for fiscal year 1920, we had 1.4 million. For fiscal year 2021, only 1.3 million. This was a drop of 3%. And we think that is primarily due to, we, the Ed Thomas Water Plant got flooded in one of the big storms in August, and there was some electrical work that had to be done. So we transferred all the water usage from McIntosh, or I might have that backwards. It was McIntosh that got flooded, I believe. And we asked Greensboro to not take what we have promised them every day for a daily amount. We asked them to not take it for about a week so that we could get the plant, water plant back up and running. Our sewer sales were at 1.4 million for fiscal year 1920. And for this year, they're at 1.6 million, so that's roughly about a 10% increase. And all total, our total water and sewer sales are at 2 point, almost 2.9 million for fiscal year 1920 and 2.979 for fiscal year 2021. Overall, an increase of 3.4%.
So do we think the sewer increase at 10% is a result potentially of some of the heavy rains that we had in July and August?
Yes, sir. And then for the expenses for the Water Resources Fund, last year we spent 3.3 million. And this year, we're at 2.9 million, almost 12 and a half percent decrease. Again, that's kind of overall, and for both of the general fund and the Water Resources Fund, I want to remind council that we froze 28 positions, so that's having an impact on our expenses as well.
So Peggy, these water numbers, those do reflect kind of the delayed billing as well?
Yes, exactly. That's exactly right.
So if somebody's received a bill and has not paid it, then that isn't counted yet as a revenue? Is that correct?
That is true for property taxes, but for water sales, we do recognize it as a revenue when we bill it because that's an enterprise fund.
Okay, so this does not necessarily, like to Harold's earlier point, take into effect actual collection rate?
No.
Yeah.
So just want to remind you, touch briefly on the CARES funding that the city of Burlington has received from Alamance County. This, of course, was, the CARES Act was allocated money to the state, and the state allocated it to the counties and said they had to give 25% to municipalities. So our first round was almost 340,000. Our next round was 495,000, which gave us a total of 835,000. But then there were two municipalities in Alamance County who did not want to use any of their CARES funding. And so with the reallocation, the city of Burlington got another 10,000. So our total reimbursement for money spent on CARES COVID-19 expenses is 845,000. These monies can be used for public health emergency, and they cannot be used for anything that was budgeted already by March 27 of 2020. And we have to spend this money, it has to be for costs incurred between March 1st and December 30th of this year. The general categories that are allowed are medical expenses, public health expenses, payroll expenses, compliance expenses, economic support and other COVID-related expenses. One of our primary reimbursement costs is going to be payroll expenses because the Families First Recovery Act required all employers to, if someone came down with COVID, to give them two weeks of paid leave in order to take care, to not be, work two weeks without pay. So there's several different pay types that the Families First Act required us to pay. So that's where a lot of our expenses are going, as well as supplies for cleaning and PP&amp;E equipment. The last thing that I want to go over real quick is what happens when we do have funding from CDBG. That's funding to help citizens with their, with their water bill, utility bills and rent. And also with the governor's one executive orders, 124 and 142 ending. We are now allowed, we chose to set up a six-month payment plan for all those who got behind. And so this is just to let you know, if you go to the City of Burlington websites, this is for any citizens who are watching, you can go and click on this button. City of Burlington will return to regular billing practices in September. Learn more about that. All right, actually, I'm going to go back. The first one is the COVID-19 Response Financial Assistant. If you click on that button, you'll get this screen. And it says, again, click here for additional info. If you click there, you will get this screen. And this will show you what qualifies. You have to be moderate to low income. You have to have experienced a loss of job or some missing work due to COVID-related. And you also must live within the city limits of Burlington. We've had about 70 applications come in. Some are being reviewed and need to be additional information. 12 are approved at this time. And five have been denied because they were either, did not live within the city limits of Burlington or they did not experience a COVID-related incidence. Last, if we, you want to find out and you don't qualify for the CDBG assistance, you want to find out what the city of Burlington's plan is, if you clicked on this button, you would see that you would need additional info. And then this is let you know that there are not any late fees, interest penalties on the past due balance incurred prior to July 29th. And the rest of the information is here about how you can apply for the payment plan. And there's, here's where you can download the payment plan agreement. And now I believe Harden wants to add a couple more things.
Yeah, thank you Peggy, thank you for the report. I was just going to summarize some of the water and sewer billing that's on that one webpage there. Just as a reminder to everyone that's listening this evening. So as Peggy said, we do have payment plans, payment plan options for everyone. There are no late fees, no interest, no penalties on your past due balances as long as that was before July 29th. As she mentioned, you do have six months to pay dating back to July 29th. And then we have the water bill, water utility assistance program that's run through our CDBG Community Development Office. And folks can just contact Community Development to get that started. The information is also available at the annex when you, if you have an inquiry there. But then there's two other assistance options through CDBG funds that we've pushed out to other organizations, the Women's Resource Center and the City Gate Dream Center both have programs folks can apply for for utilities, mortgage and rent assistance if they qualify as low to moderate income. Peggy, if you go to the next slide, council, this is just sort of looking forward. As you know, when we, when you adopted the budget in June, we talked about making this presentation to you in September, sort of towards the end of the first quarter of our fiscal year, our full fiscal year during pandemic. We did you, we gave a precursor last month. And so here, here we have more information today for you to digest. I think looking forward between now and the end of the year, what we want to do as a staff is bring you some, we'll have some future budget adjustments again, over the next three quarters, spread out between now and, you know, June of 2021. As we look at things, as we see, you know, decreased spending across departments, which obviously some of the first, the data from the first two months is showing us that. We obviously budgeted that way as well. We do have CARES Act funding that we didn't count on when we adopted the budget back in June to the tune of $845,000, as Peggy has mentioned. So that's a plus for us figuring out how to handle some things that we don't know how to handle. Our revenue receipts are a little higher than projected, which is always a good thing. We're going to continue to watch that very, very carefully. And as I said, try to continue to get advice from Office of the State Treasurer when they're willing to offer that. And then there's some unanticipated needs and obviously things that seem a little bit clearer or things that have changed a little bit from when we were, we were all scrambling in April, May and June to understand what had hit us in March. So as, as the year goes on, we'll have a little bit better picture of all of those kinds of things. So we will have some, you know, there's some workload demands that come with that that seem a little different to us now than they did in May and June or certainly in April. And so we'll be, you know, reserve the right to talk to council in the future about that if we unfreeze some of these positions or work on some of our especially furloughed positions in recreation and some of our recreation programs come back slowly as we enter phase 2.5 and then ultimately someday phase three. So that's kind of where we are looking forward. So I think Peggy and I and the budget team envision an ongoing conversation with you as a council. Like I said, over the next three quarters. So you may hear some more from us next month, if not next month, November. And then December, we want to get in front of you and talk about what we can do for our merit increases for employees for next calendar year as well. So I think with that, Peggy and I stand ready for questions, if anybody has questions.
Very good, thank you. Questions from council?
Peggy, when you, when you talk to the local government commission or basically that area, and you mentioned the revenues being higher, especially in those two particular areas you had, you had mentioned. What did, did they respond in terms of, are they seeing that in other communities? Or is it just in parts of the state? Or was that just an anomaly, we believe?
Sales act was across the state. You know, that was, that was not just for the city of Burlington. So it's kind of unusual. She really thinks, I think one of the main reason is the kinks and the unemployment on both the federal and state level getting worked out so that people finally had some money available to spend. It's, you know, it's just, she feels like it's an anomaly at this point.
It looks like it's timing. It's just timing of how everybody's schedule shifted or adjusted a little bit. There's delays here and there and certain things are accelerated. So I think as we get a couple, three more months into it, it'll sort of normalize out. You'll probably really get to kind of see where you're at.
Yes, and Jim, that is, that was some of the advice that we received is like this, you know, don't, don't, don't read too much into this one month, either for good news or bad news.
And both on the spending side too. The revenue side looked really good and the spending side looked really low. But we've delayed some spending, so that's going to all sort of catch up here, here soon.
Peggy, on your chart of what is eligible to be spent with this funding, with the CARES funding, it said economic supports. What, what, can you give me an example of what that would be?
One example is the CDBG funds that are helping citizens, I'd say considered economic support. I believe the county established, and I don't know Peter, if it's 300,000 or something for small businesses. Alamance County established some of their funds, a small business loan program to help the really small businesses through this pandemic.
And is that something that we are administering?
No ma'am, that is strictly through the county. We're not doing that with any of the funds that we've received.
But we could do, we could do something with our own.
Correct.
If we wanted to say, take, take restaurants and create a pool of money for them to help bridge this period of time, we could create our own with that money. That's what it's for.
Correct, yeah, that, that would count towards that category. And that's like, as Peggy mentioned, that's one of the, the county created a program. They're running that through the community foundation to try to get some, some dollars out in the hands of businesses that are struggling, you know, yet another tool for businesses to try to hang on as we see what happens with our economy. So, so to Ms. Hikes to answer your question, that is one of the categories that's eligible. It's not something we have allocated any funds for at this moment in time, but that is one of the six categories. It's the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office is one of the six categories that they allow.
I really think we should take a hard look at that to see if there's some areas that, that we could put some money towards. That's one of the things that's concerned me all along is I don't, there's a lot of expense that goes with this, but there's some, there's the Samaritan side of this too, that is stewards of this money. If they're small businesses or people that need it and could take advantage of it because obviously our state's been slower opening things up. So the, the pressure on a lot of small businesses has been more continuous than it has in other states. I really think we should take a hard look at that.
Yeah, I don't agree. And I also believe we need to, to look how that would be handled in terms of formulas, who potentially could, could apply and what information they'd have to put forth. And I'm not sure with the state pandemic office, Peggy, have they set any, any specific goals and objectives with that in terms of, through the pandemic office?
Not from what I'm aware of. I know we have another video phone call today, Tuesday and Wednesday, but I'm not aware of them having any objectives on that. And I will say that through August, we have spent a substantial sum just on the different new pay types that we're required to pay out.
So what we'll do is we'll, we'll come back to council in October. Mona asked Peter and Scott, if you can get Peter's video live for us too, right now too. So if Peter has anything to say. But we'll, we'll do an analysis of what currently exists for a Burlington business. So we have a handful of things. We have some CDBG funds that we've already made eligible for business assistance. We've got the micro enterprise, the micro enterprise loan program. And then like I said, the county has set something up through the community foundation. So we'll see how that fits. Obviously, all Burlington businesses are eligible for that. There may be some other layers. Peter's been, been really staying on top of that. He was the pioneer sort of encouraging us and urging us to look in this direction. Peter, you want to just, is there anything else I've left out? And we can just do a comprehensive review for council and have all that ready in October and then see if you feel like that's adequate or some things you want to add or create additional layers or programs, we can certainly take a look.
Yes, so we actually, we created a sort of a blog post communication that's posted on the city's economic development page and the alamancestrong.com website that actually summarizes all of the available assistance for a Burlington small business. So that document is live. I can't, you know, I'm sort of in the moment here, so I can't pull it up exactly. But I can certainly get that to all the council members. Blake Moyer put that together last week after the most recent announcements of funding available. So we have a pretty good understanding of what for a Burlington-based business is available. The county funding is certainly one of those through self-help and the Alamance Community Foundation. And our CDBG CV program is another one that, that is available directly to Burlington residents. One thing that we've found with applicants that's a little tricky, there is a federal law that says you cannot double dip on any coronavirus funds. And we're finding that a lot of businesses have already gotten a PPP or an idle loan. And if you've already received that money from the federal government, you are not eligible for city entitlement funds through CDBG, that are specific to the coronavirus. So that's one tricky piece that's been tripping up a lot of businesses. And the other direct feedback we get a lot is there isn't a lot of appetite for debt in the small business community. Folks are looking for forgivable loans or grants. They're willing to keep their promises on those, but they're not able to do the repayment because their receipts are just aren't where they were six to 12 months ago.
That was going to be my question, Peter, was kind of what was the, the demand versus supply out there? As I've heard this same thing, that debt or loans are not nearly as, as bought after or applied for as some of the grant options are forgivable.
Well, some of the, the PPP program ended up having money left over in it, the federal program. So that was not fully subscribed. I have heard that the NC Rapid Recovery Program also has a lot of money still in it because of the, the dearth of individuals applying to it. And we, again, we've come up with that issue with our forgivable loan program of folks having already received federal assistance. So the appetite from what I'm hearing from businesses is they're certainly looking for planning and support services, but grants, I mean, obviously, everybody wants a grant versus a loan. But, but loans are especially difficult for struggling businesses, mostly because they don't see the end, the light at the end of the tunnel and don't know when, you know, what the new normal means for their revenues. It's hard to project those revenues when it's so different out there.
Other council questions?
Thanks for the information, Peter. That were very good points.
You're welcome.
Anything else on agenda item C while we're here? Well, Peter, and I do want to jump back to item B. The request on this is council consensus to proceed with the strategic planning process for economic development. I just want to see if there's any objections to that proceeding with that strategic planning. Okay, all right. Just wanted to formally cover that one. All right, next we'll move on to item D on our agenda, which is the Community Police Advisory Team Proposal. This time I'd like to recognize our city manager, Harden Watkins.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to get started and then I will yield the floor to Chief Smythe. Thanks, everybody, for the opportunity to discuss this topic. It's a very important one for our entire community. As you know, this has been a topic of discussion here in Burlington, across the state, across the United States, the spring and all of the summer. After George Floyd was killed on May 25th in Minnesota, there was more interest, more attention. Concern has been heightened related to many subjects, related to professional policing standards, to best practices in policing, to racial equity, procedural justice and race relations in all parts of our country. Chief Smythe, our police leadership team, you as members of the city council, and I have all welcomed and embraced these conversations. We've all spent considerable time listening and thinking about this subject and how it manifests in Burlington. The conversation, as you know, at times has been challenging. It's also been uplifting. It's been insightful, it's been demanding, it's been inspiring. I'm thankful for the active participation and collegial dialogue that we've had over the summer and honestly, part of all of 2020, actually, with many community-minded folks here in Burlington. Chief Smythe and I have been able to nurture enhancing, nurture and enhance some existing relationships that we had through the city, folks that have been previously engaged with us in conversation about policing and conversations about community government. We've also developed and built meaningful relationships with people that are new to the conversation, equally devoted, equally dedicated, but new to the conversation. We're looking forward to continuing these conversations through the rest of September and through all of October as our community conversations about CPAT, which for us means Community Police Advisory Team, and the Burlington Police Department moves along. So as you know, the Burlington Police Department is an outstanding agency. We're very proud of what they do. 175 dedicated professionals in the Burlington Police Department, 139 sworn officers, 36 professionals that support that team and support our mission, support our mission. They're all committed to community service, committed to helping others. I'm proud of their daily efforts to serve our community. As you know, they're dedicated to professionalism, dedicated to excellence. It's evidenced by our Kalia accreditation that we obtained 31 years ago. Still have that today. Council members know this, that if you have Kalia accreditation, you're in rarefied air amongst other folks in the country. Not only are we accredited, we've also received some other national awards, including the Valor Award that recognizes our outstanding approach and our department's culture of excellence. I'm pleased to work with Chief Smythe. I'm extremely proud of the leadership he's exercised during his tenure here in Burlington as police chief. I'm not sure if everybody knows this, but there's a 21-member commission that makes up the Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation. That's made up of 11 law enforcement practitioners with the balance being selected from the public and private sectors. Chief Smythe is one of 11 public safety leaders, police chiefs in North America that helped formulate and decide upon the best practices for professional policing. The Kalia Commission meets to review candidate agencies for accreditation and also provides policy guidance for operations of agencies all across the US for Canada and Mexico. So just as a reminder, again, the city of Burlington got its first accreditation in 1989, has maintained that accredited status for 31 years, was re-accredited to the advanced gold standard in March of 2017. There are 18,000 eligible law enforcement agencies, local, state and federal in the US that could choose to be accredited for a handful of reasons. There are only 726 of those agencies that are accredited, which equates to about 4% of agencies being accredited. And obviously, we are one of those. So we meet 100% of the hundreds of accreditation standards that are applied to us and we meet what's called the gold standard in public safety. So with all that being said, city realizes and Chief Smythe, Chief Smythe and I realize that we can always improve. We're always interested in adapting and being open to, one, ways to make the department more professional, ways to make the department more responsive to community needs. And three, more aware of expectations and beliefs of our community. We recognize there are people in our community with different perceptions of the police department here and perceptions of police departments in other parts of our country, very different than the perceptions that I may have in my seat here at City Hall or Chief Smythe. or Chief Smythe and his leadership team may have in the police headquarters building. We realize improvements can be made both here and around the country. And we want to help create a vehicle and a forum to do that, to recognize that and help facilitate community conversation and dialogue that allows us and other leaders at BPD and across the city to hear that, see that and react appropriately. So in the spirit of creating meaningful community forum to discuss police topics, to address issues and concerns related to public safety and to provide advice to the city's police leadership team, Chief Smythe and I jointly prepared this proposed charter for CPAT, the Community Police Advisory Team. Chief Smythe is going to review the details of that charter, which we're presenting publicly for the first time this evening. We look forward to a community conversation over the next couple of months about CPAT. We're optimistic that a charter will be ready for council consideration in November. If so, we believe the process of selecting and appointing 15 or 20 members can be done and CPAT could begin its work in late January. So with that, thanks again for your time to, an opportunity to discuss this subject. And I'm going to yield the floor now to Chief Smythe and he's going to walk through the details of our proposal.
Thanks, Harden. Mayor and members of council, with your permission, I'll share my screen, which has got the document loaded. And then perhaps you can follow along. You've got, it's in your packet as well. And my intent is not to go line by line by any stretch of the imagination here, but rather just to do, you know, there's 11 articles included here, so I'd like to hit those, you know, briefly and go through them. So article one's the name. You've heard that. Article two is the mission. You know, we've been doing community policing in Burlington for a number of decades. And, and we need community help to do this the best way possible. And that's really what this is about, right? Improve the quality of policing in Burlington. And that's a cooperative effort. Article three is the goals and please jump in anytime. If you've got a question or want me to stop or slow down, please just give me a shout. And I'm, I'm happy to do that and work through this at a, at a, at a pace that you all determine. So. But goals, we've got 11 of those and they're as broad based and as comprehensive as we could envision. We had some input from a number of community groups going into this. And so we really tried to stick to some of their concepts and pull them into this document. So there's some cut and paste, you know, right from others' documents that they intended for us to share and do in this way. So they're included in the list here. It's a broad list of, of those 11 things that we expect will be happening in collaboration between the community and the police as we work through the various meetings. Article four is, is the scope of the advisory board. And we're limited by North Carolina General Statute 168-168 there. That's the public records law that applies to us. And we just front load with that, that everybody recognizes. There are some things that we just can't release without a specific court order. And, you know, we're, we're going to be following that law as we move forward with this initiative. Article five on, on membership, again, a very broad based list that's as inclusive as, as we can make that. And then envisions a selection process that looks to create a high level of diversity. The, the members are going to, you know, submit applicants to the city similar to boards and commissions. And then ultimately be approved by the council members. And y'all will get a shot at making sure that we're as diverse as we need to be and that we represent all of Burlington in the various facets of the work that the team would be undertaking. We talked to some folks about different terms of service. We looked at other boards around the state that did similar work. And we, we landed at three years of service with some rotation assigned. You know, every, every, every year, a certain number of members would either roll off or be replaced. And that keeps some tenure on the board. So you're not getting, getting everybody replaced exactly three, three years from now. So that's the terms of service included in article six. Article seven, meetings will be held monthly. We envision co-chairs that are community members that will help drive the agenda and the timing and meetings, bringing in subject matter experts to educate the Community Police Advisory Team members on industry best practices, those sorts of things. All of that will be included. Article eight talks about the members' role to be engaged, to perhaps undertake some effort to make sure that they're understanding of what goes on in the police department that might be attending the Community Police Academy, going on ride alongs and some of those things that will help them to be the most effective members they can, they can be. The chief's role and the city's manager's role, I've kind of just lumped them in my mind that both of us are now members with NACOL. That's the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement Agencies. And we look to them as kind of the best practice in, in oversight and advisory boards. And we will take guidance from their materials and ensure that we bring in those best practices that they bring forward. Those are included in article nine and 10. You know, the city manager role is well established and we're not recrafting that. So this chapter speaks to that very specifically, that the city manager is my boss and has the first level of oversight. And that's important that we hold true to that. And then lastly, article 11 is interaction with other entities. There's some proposals currently floating around to do a countywide law enforcement advisory board. And should that come about, we'll absolutely pull some members up out of our board and be the representatives on that board and continue to seek best practices across the county and make sure that we're working collaboratively with other police departments. So that's a very quick and very high level overview. And I'll take a deep breath and answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Any questions from council? Chief Harden indicated that the requested timeline was for possibly having a charter ready in November. And assuming we have a good slate of applicants and can fill those to be operational by January. Want to just kind of see how, is that a, a pretty realistic timeline? Or is that kind of the fastest possible timeline?
I think it's a little bit of both, sir. I think that we recognize that this is a critical juncture in policing in America and a very hot topic in our community. There's so many folks that are interested. And, you know, I want to strike while the iron's hot. I want to make sure people are, are coming in and joining us. So I hope that we get a robust review of this proposal and that those comments come flowing in and we're able to compile those and then finalize this document. And then, yeah, absolutely. I think that as long as people turn in applications, we can vet those quickly and assemble a nice slate of, of membership. And it's not pie in the sky at all. It's very actionable as far as we're concerned.
Would the, would the same application and commissions?
You went pretty digital, sir. I don't think I understood your question.
Would the application for board members be, is the plan to within the city?
I think I understand the question. So Mr. Mayor, what we would do is have folks turn in applications through our community engagement division, which is what we do for all our other boards and commissions across the city. Morgan Lassiter and John Vernon would handle that for us. And then what's, one unique piece about this is in, in the proposal that's before you, Chief Smythe and I would take a look at those and bring 15 to 20 names to city council representing the various categories that's listed on page two and page three of the charter. And then council would make a recommendation. And then the idea is that council then would take formal action on that recommendation and would make those formal appointments. And then as she said, will be staggered terms initially, but then it rotates to three-year terms. And so, yeah, it would be out of cycle for the typical community engagement division process to start with. But then at some point it would follow in, fall into the cycle.
But then it would be, would it be ongoing as kind of a nominating slate of candidates versus just a slate of eligible applicants?
And I know I'll let chief add to my, my thoughts on this. Is it, so we say 15 to 20, so we're always, it will fluctuate from time to time as people come and go. But I think if we have openings, I think we're going to bring proposals mid-year, chief. Is that, is that how you see that?
Yeah, absolutely. We want as many voices at the table to share their perspectives as possible. And, you know, this is all about positive growth for us. And I think that will come from good dialogue, good debate, good discussion, and then consensus building. That, that's our hope.
I commend the, the categories on article five about the makeup of the board. I think that's really important for the conversations that I want to see happen through this is to make sure that we have a wide and diverse kind of group of individuals from across the community. So I would hope if community members feel like anything isn't represented in that list, that we get feedback in the, the process over the next couple of weeks leading into the final charter, hopefully coming back in November.
Mayor, I think since you brought up attendance, I think one of the things that certainly will be maybe a little different if someone was interested in serving on this group versus some of the others is there are some expectations that they attend to ride alongs a year that they finish the Community Police Academy within two years of their appointment, if they haven't already gone through it. And then I think there's a firm expectation about attendance. And I think chief looks forward to having the co-chairs help him ensure that folks that get selected for this do attend and participate. We had a group like this that, you know, kind of quit meeting in, in January of 2016 due to lack of attendance. So, and I think we don't want to replicate that.
Yeah, I appreciate some of the history that's been provided to council about that previous group and why it was dissolved. And I appreciate your work addressing some of those concerns in this new proposal. Any council questions? Other council questions?
I have a quick question, mayor, and I'm making an assumption, but I'll clarify at this point. I'm assuming that this board will comply and it will, with open meetings law and it'd be just like the other boards and commissions. I'm making that assumption, but somebody tell me that's right. That's, that's what I need to hear. So.
Yes, sir. That, that's our expectation. We're well aware of what those requirements are. And we're fully compared, prepared to comply with all those indicators.
Okay, I, I know, I know part of this really quite frankly is openness and the transparency. So just so the public will know, this board will comply with that. So you've answered my question. Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Well, chief and Harden, you mentioned this is kind of the, the beginning of this conversation in the public unveil of this, this template. What, other than the public comment sessions at our, our city council meetings, what would you desire as far as the best way for the public to engage with you in providing their feedback?
Do you want to start or would you like me to?
Thank you, boss.
So I went, I sent the agenda package to folks that we have had ongoing conversations with over the last month or two. I sent that earlier today and said, you know, this is what we're presenting this evening. So I'm sure that we'll hear some comments over the next few days. We have a scheduled meeting tomorrow with the Alamance Agents for Change. Then, and this item is on the agenda for discussion. So we'll initiate some conversation with them. And again, as chief made, made reference, a lot of the things that we've received from other group, from the groups, even some things that have been presented nationally have been incorporated into this language. So some of the language should look familiar to folks who are very interested in this subject. And chief has ongoing conversations ad hoc with a lot of folks that are interested in this. So chief, if you want to pick up from there, maybe it's already started happening.
Yeah, I think, you know, Harden indicated, he shot out a few notes and, and I've got a broader array of folks that fit some of the categories in article five already. And they'll get specific directed communication from me soliciting their input on how we move forward with this. And then I think just, my email is readily available and so is Harden's, right? So anybody that has any comment should send those directly to the two of us and we'll make sure that their voice is heard and included in the conversation. And then we'll be back, I think, in front of you in a public setting to, to air this and hear input and concerns again in that fashion. So there's plenty of opportunities moving forward and we're not going to sit back and wait. We're going to, you know, direct, solicit a number of folks on what's the best language here to make sure we're as inclusive as we can be.
Very good. We appreciate it.
I have one comment on article six, and this may be cross that bridge when we come to it. But I'm thinking it might be a little tricky about assigning people to the one-year term since we're asking them to do the citizens academy within the first two years. So I don't want to drill down too far, but that may be something we want to think about a little bit more.
Yeah, I think in all honesty, that, that's, that's an ask, right? I, I think you're right. In the first year, that's a difficult lift for some folks. And my thought going into this was just to randomly draw lots for the one-year, two-year and three-year. And then some sense for the one-year people that, you know, we'll re-up you for a second term. There's no prohibition of that. As long as they're coming to meetings, they can immediately roll over with, with y'all's approval, obviously. But they could roll over for another three-year term and be right back in action and then make sure they're pursuing all the learning opportunities that they could have. So I think with those couple of factors, we should be okay on, on managing that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I am going to have to drop off. I apologize.
All right. I'm glad you were able to stick around through this, this agenda item.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
Any objections to the chief proceeding with this charter with a expected return date in November?
Sounds good.
Very good. Chief Harden, any other comments?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work on this. And as you mentioned, there are a lot of community partners and folks who provided feedback in this process. So we thank everybody who chimed in there and we look forward to your continued advice and guidance as we refine this charter proposal and get this rolling as soon as possible. Because we know this, the need for this type of advisory feedback is critical to keeping our police department focused on how they best serve our community. All right. Next on our agenda is item E, Board and Commissioners Report. So at this time, for Planning and Zoning Commission, I'll recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening, mayor and council. I've got a couple of items. One item for planning and zoning, and then I think five in the traffic commission. You have all that information in your packet as well, but I'm going to share my screen. Everybody see that yet?
We don't have that up yet.
It's an aerial. It may be too large. Better?
There we go. We've got the screen share up.
Does that have Eric Lane on what you're seeing? Just want to make sure I'm using the right one. I just wanted to orient you. This is a rezoning request, obviously I-40 running there east to west. Alamance Road, what you see hatched is the, is the site. You may recall this being the former Bob Evans Restaurant for many years. And then the JR Outlet Complex there to, to its side. The request is to rezon from Light Industrial to General Business District. Of course, it's located at Eric Lane. This is a straight rezoning. As you know, there's no conditions or planned development, so we're not into the details of that. So it would allow all uses in the general business district. The applicant, John Burton, will be here with us tomorrow evening and may speak to those. But obviously some of the uses that he wanted to be would not be allowed in Light Industrial. And that's the reason for the request of General Business. I'll show you one other item if I can pull it up. Just give you a better picture. Is that there the purple? As you can see, it's currently Light Industrial and General Business being adjacent to that. Staff and P&amp;Z recommended this unanimously for approval. It's compatible with our land use plan and adjacent to existing general business zoning. Now I can answer any questions you have. This is on pub, for a public hearing tomorrow evening.
Mike, I couldn't come up with very many differences between Light Industrial and General Business. Can you give me a couple of instances where?
I can. Yeah, the things that aren't allowed in Light Industrial would be a child daycare center, a community youth center, a, a school, public or private, elementary, high school, all of those. Those are the main ones. A bed and breakfast not permitted in Light Industrial. But there's about, there's about 15 of those that aren't allowed. And one of those uses are something that he's wanting to pursue that he can't do right now with Light Industrial.
Okay.
Other council questions? Other council questions? Mike, as my understanding was some of the UDO streamlining for approvals that it was possible that some rezonings might not require council approvals. My thought was it would be stuff like this where we're going kind of less or more, we're shifting from a less restrictive to a more restrictive or generally a lower usage that that might be the case. Did we end up implementing any of those streamlinings?
I don't, I don't, I don't believe we did. It may have been discussed. But this will be, yeah, this is definitely changing from one district to another versus within a district. But, yeah, I don't, I don't believe we have that ability without council.
Any other questions on this? All right.
Okay.
Traffic Commission?
Traffic Commission met on August twentieth and had the five items as well. They're in their packet. I do want to go through them just for information and obviously answer any questions that you have. Is my screen scrolling for you?
Yep.
Okay. This, the first one we have here is a crosswalk at the intersection of Tarleton and West Davis Street. Tarleton Avenue currently has a crosswalk that's, that needs, that needs to be redone. The crosswalk that's being put in place is actually called Crossing West Davis Street. With that, we'll put additional pedestrian signs in as well. If you know this area, just up the street at West Davis and Garfield, it's the very same application on the side street and on the main street. So it's a crosswalk installation on West Davis Street. We had no questions or comments at the commission meeting on this item.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm sorry. The next item was a request from a business owner on Cleveland Avenue to remove parking or not allow parking along both sides of the, of Cleveland Avenue. Commission, after discussion with the business and staff, recommended that we prohibit parking on the south side of Cleveland, Cleveland Avenue. You can see my mouse. This is where the businesses are located, or businesses located. So it would just be along the south side of Cleveland Avenue.
Is that to improve traffic flow?
Just safety and allow truck, delivery trucks and things to get in and out. That seems to be a problem. It wasn't always employees. Surprisingly, it just vehicles parking there, being left there. Sort of a side street that if you don't go down there, you may not see them parking. But with police, police's recommendation felt like this would be a way to at least prohibit it and be able to address it if we come back and it's still a parking problem. So that would be on the south side of Cleveland. No parking.
Do we maintain that street, Mike?
Yes, we do.
It's in really, really bad shape.
Very narrow, too. That's it. Some of us, a lot of side streets that we have. Yeah.
I'm just thinking, if they've got, if there's going to be a lot of traffic there with trucks and that kind of thing, it's, it's really important.
I think it's been ongoing. It's just becoming nuisance to them, I believe, and we discussed what were our options, and to be able to enforce something, we have to have it signed. So I think it was just one of those that should fix the problem. They've done some additional communication with their employees as well. So.
But it also looks like they are redoing that building.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. I'll move along. Speed limit reduction, actually an installation of speed limit signs. We're out on Haley Long Lane from Christopher Drive to the end of Haley Long Lane. I'll roll down so you can see this. This was a neighborhood request, speed limit reduction, you know, from thirty-five to twenty-five. And then we would as well post the speed limit signs in the neighborhood. Any questions on that request?
And that is all dead ends. There's no through streets.
Correct. Sorry. This is to convert to an always-stop Washington Street at Saint, South Saint John Street and Washington Street at South Saint John Street. The existing crossings have a stop condition at this, at this time. This was a neighborhood request as well. You can see that there. There's also a sight distance issue with this location. If you're sitting on Washington Street, traveling east and try to look back to your west, there's some parking that's allowed down the street, on-street parking, that creates a safety problem. So the always-stop was approved. There was no comments on it.
Any questions on that one? All right.
Okay. This is the last one. This may be something a little bit new to us. We're trying as a staff and also as a community with the police department, keep lists of areas that have not historically had a stop sign. These are locations that no stop sign was installed. You may ask, well, how, you know, how is it operating? You know, traffic does that, and it has been operating without a stop sign at thirty-eight locations throughout the city, and we have additional ones that we're looking at. That's what the request is tonight, to be able to go out and officially put stop signs in place at these locations. None of these locations create a four-way stop. We do have some with a four-leg intersection, but we're not making like an always-stop, which we will bring individually to you at any of these locations. These are locations, again, as you can see by the graphics that are in your packet, and I'll roll through some of these just to give everyone an example. For example, here to your left, there's a stop sign on Adam Street, but there's not one to the south on Adam Street. Touching my screen there. There we go. Same example, coming up to Avon Avenue, there's not a stop sign located there. I would hundred percent residential coming into a side, to a major street. A side street that's very narrow, much like Cleveland. And you can see these examples as well as the list. I'll just roll through them. If there's any questions.
Mike, I believe you shared with me, you feel like folks are stopping at these places already.
They are. Yeah, this, this was not from accident or pedestrian conflicts. It's again, an inventory and just a safe, safety list that we work with the police department on. And we'll have more to bring. I mean, it's just part of our inventory process that we're trying to do in Transportation Department.
Seems like good.
So I'm, yeah.
Good work.
Any questions?
Find all those and address them. So I'd say we hope drivers use common sense at those intersections, but.
It's surprising.
Variety of right-of-way seems to be helpful, too.
Very much so. And Mayor and Council, these are on your consent agenda for tomorrow evening if you desire to approve them.
Any questions on any of those? All right. Appreciate that, Mike.
Sure. Thank you.
Last item on our agenda is City Manager Report. Harden, anything you want to share?
I don't have anything else, Mayor. I think I've already exhausted the balance of the time that anybody wanted to hear from me this evening.
We always love hearing from you, Harden. Council, any other comments?
No, thank you.
With that, what?
I'd like to make one thing, Mayor, if I could. The report that we got today from Animal Services, I don't know if you saw the email or not. Their work continues to fascinate me in terms of of how they are working with the county and as a staff there in terms of really being very cognizant of the animal issues, especially during this very difficult time. That being said, my wife just said we have a loose dog in my front yard, so that's another situation. But they've done a heck of a job, and I think the staff needs to be congratulated in Animal Services.
Yeah, they do some amazing work out there, especially considering the facilities they have had, and we're excited to see what they do with their new facilities as those all get completed. Thank you for pointing that out, Harold. Any other council comments? All right, we will stand adjourned until seven PM tomorrow evening. So folks wish to join us, they can do so via Zoom or our YouTube platform. So thanks, everyone, this evening. Take care.
See you later.
Bye.
Bye.